Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted when you come in the door. And the legislature just changed the Open Meetings Act, so the revised version is where the binder is. The main change they made to the Open Meetings Act that affects us tonight is whenever there is a public hearing, whoever is coming up is required to state their name and their address. The address part's new. So when you come up during a public hearing, you can state your name and the address. Josh, are you here? I was going to say with the mask because I can't see. We have one presentation tonight, Serpice County Economic Development Corporation. Josh is here to give us our first quarter report.
Good afternoon, council here with your first quarter report. So I'll run through kind of a few key points. I think you should have the documents included in your packets. But kind of the, one of the headlines is you'll see this first quarter, we had over $612 million in building permit valuations.
Josh, can you tip the mic up just a little bit? Thanks.
Perfect. So we had $612 million in building permit valuations in Papillion this first quarter or so. To take that into account, all of last year in the City of Papillion, there was $459 million in building permit valuations. Interestingly enough, I don't think this is a record. I think back in 2019, the third quarter, there was over $700 million in building permit valuation. So just some incredible growth and a big kind of kudos to the City of Papillion staff for all the work that goes into getting those projects ready to go. Kind of then jumping down, I'll just touch base on the labor force information. So we're pretty steady in the kind of 94,000 in regards to our labor force there. So if you look at this year and last year, so right kind of before COVID hit, our unemployment rate and our kind of raw unemployment numbers are pretty similar. But the employment and labor force is about $2,000 less. So kind of what I think some of that might indicate is you still, you have some of those individuals who maybe they're a caretaker, so they're not coming back into the workforce yet, or maybe they're a parent that's staying at home with their kids while their kids might still be going through some of the learning at home or kind of waiting for the end of the school year. So hoping to see that those labor force numbers pick back up because that continues to be a huge need for our businesses is finding some of those folks to fill those open positions they have. So then I'll kind of move on down to some of the project activities. So we did land two projects this first quarter. So that was the Google and Facebook. I think they had big announcements. So between those two, there was a $900 million capital investment kind of there along Highway 50. So the Facebook expansion is that expansion down into Springfield, just south of their current campus. So then there is, there was an announcement of 100 total jobs along with that Facebook campus. I think we kind of make an assumption that there'll be more than those 100 total jobs. But those are the numbers they gave us and we look forward to any, any numbers on top of that. So also we had 10 opportunities. So those are things that we submitted sites for. So five of those were in manufacturing. That number 10 is a pretty strong number. I think usually we are kind of in that 30 to 40 range for the year. So right on track of where we like to be. Like I mentioned, five manufacturing. So there's a, and it's kind of a, a big variety of the projects we saw come in. So some spec warehouse projects, some manufacturing projects for the food processing industry, some food processing projects as well. And then we've started to see kind of a handful of projects coming in for the, kind of some of the electronic vehicle industry. And kind of as the country moves towards some of those new vehicles. So we've seen some kind of national RFIs come across our desk. So we kind of anticipate we'll see some of more of those projects coming down the line. So hopefully some new manufacturing opportunities that we can grab and find a good place for here in Serpice County. Kind of one of the biggest obstacles remains site availability. I know we kind of have our sewer solution, but it's still a couple of years off. So that doesn't do folks good that are looking to build right now. Also, we don't really have any rail serve sites, which is something when we have those big production facilities, they want to be on a rail. Opportunities for that kind of down in Bellevue, but it's not, it's not there right now. Also, cost of sites when we have big purchases with, you know, Amazon, Google, Facebook. And I think that kind of drives up other folks' expectations of what their land can go, whether it's development ready or not. So that's something we're starting to run into as well when we have, you know, folks bring on, they say, hey, I'd like to, you know, put my piece of property in front of you. But then the price they give us is not very attractive to potential developers or projects. Also the low unemployment rate, so sub 3%. So I'm trying to appeal to projects that are asking for, you know, hundreds to even a few thousand workers. That, that causes some, some issues there. So some other kind of things I'll just touch on. So we're excited to announce we're doing some kind of introduction to construction kits for eighth and ninth graders across the county. So there's a huge need for skilled trade workers. And I think there's a lot of work been doing to try and attract those workers. So we'll be giving 300 kind of introduction kits to Papillion LaVista students, 825 across the county. And those kits will include some real basic construction PPEs. So think safety goggles, work gloves, and some kind of bill basic tools that I like to say that they can't hurt themselves or others with. So a tape measure, speed square, so they can kind of get their hands on that and learn how to use those and hopefully take that with them. And then all kind of our investing companies that help contribute, they will put their logos on a cinch bag. So then they can see, hey, there's all these companies out there. And also they can take that home and their parents can see, hey, there's a lot of companies out here too that want to hire my kids and these careers are, are really attractive. I'm trying to think. And just kind of other things that we've heard talking to businesses, kind of some of the national trends. So I'm sure we've all seen the reports on the skyrocketing cost of lumber and then kind of really all kind of building materials and also some of the delays on the ports. So let me just, one kind of final comment, there's a, they deal with engines here, a company in Papillion. So they said what used to come in from the west coast ports used to take four to five days. Now it's taking anywhere from 40 to 60 days kind of on average. So that's been a really big drag. So hopefully we'll look for those numbers to kind of shorten down. But all those things you see nationally are definitely affecting us here in Serpice County. So with that, I'll kind of close and see if there's any questions.
Any questions for Josh? Thank you very much. Appreciate the partnership. Thanks. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Councilman Sunday. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Yes, could I please have here the city administrator's report?
Six yeas, one nay.
Motion passes. And next on the agenda is the city administrator's report.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. The road improvement season is well on its way. In addition to the street maintenance improvement plan work that's going on, you also notice at the intersection of 72nd and Applewood, starting on May 13th, they're going to be working on that, that intersection, adding that stoplight. Another spring cleanup day is in the books. Thank you to Jeff and Tony's teams, along with LaVista's crews for that and any other volunteers that helped to make it another successful cleanup. And also thank you to the fire department that helped as well. So as we, as we all know, there was, there was an incident there, but we're very fortunate that no one got hurt. And the fire department stayed overnight and monitored it to make sure there were no issues. The annual Papillion race series through the recreation department kicks off on May 16th with the Papillion Half Marathon. This year, new this year, the half marathon will be starting here at the Landing Complex. And we're excited to be getting back to normal and starting to do some of those fun things that we weren't able to do last year. And finally, Tony, Tracy, and the consultants will be meeting with you all on May 18th to present the final draft of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Lots of time and effort has gone into that, updating that plan, which will guide our outdoor recreation facilities for the next decade. So thank you, Tony, Tracy, and Viero for all their work on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is item E1, Ordinance 1927. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multi-Family Residential for the property legally described as part of the northwest quarter of Section 4 Township 13 North, Range 12 East of the 6 PM, Serpice County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southwest corner of Turkey Road and Shram Road, the applicant is Celebrity Homes. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Fullencamp. My address is 11440 West Center Road in Omaha. And I'm here on behalf of Celebrity Homes. And the items on your agenda today are the changes, proposed change of zone, which is item E1. And then the complementary case, which is the preliminary plat, which is item F2. This property is commonly known as the Susan D. White Hamilton Living Trust property. It's at roughly 118th and Shram Road, hence the name of the subdivision. It is south of Shram and west of Turkey Road. There are 267 lots in this proposed subdivision. Celebrity Homes built a subdivision here in Papillion, Southern Point, which I think you're familiar with, which is at, on 114th Street, north of Shram. So this is consistent with that. We appreciate the efforts of the planning staff in working with us. Appreciate their favorable recommendation. Obviously, we're anxious to get going and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sunday.
Looking at the map, I'd like it to be up so the public can see it if anybody's watching at home. Is there a way we could do that? Can you zero in on the proposed development? I'm, I'm looking at a property along Turkey Road, just south of the Walnut Creek Recreation Area. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And all I see is one street after another with solid, back-to-back, chock full of houses. And there's no green space in there whatsoever. Can you give me a good explanation as to why not?
Actually, there's, I think there's eight outlots here. Turkey Road, I know that the city is going through a revision to your comprehensive plan, which when we came and met with your staff, they advised us that this was going on. This subdivision's like many other subdivisions in the area, we are relocating Turkey Road a little bit to the west. As you know, your amendment, proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan. I have a picture over here. I don't know if this can be put up. So we're consistent with that. Lot sizes here, houses, prices are in the mid-300s. You know, it's...
I see, I see about four and a half houses per acre. So these are very small lots.
Actually, there's 267 lots on 88 acres.
I thought it was 58 acres.
No, 88.
I read that there were 267. Let, let me finish. I read there were 267 single-family homes on 58 acres. And then there's some multifamily homes on the other acreages. That's what I read in your materials that you provided us. Am I wrong on that?
I don't think that's in your package. Are you looking at Shram 108?
Shram 108 is right south of, of the Walnut Creek area, correct? Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah, it is. It's the same plat that's right here. This cross section, I don't...
The reference is the plat information, which I think is page... Oh, well, it's the plat information that was submitted and sign shows, I think this is your reference. 267 units of, of single-family on 58.3 acres, seven outlots of 6.9 acres, and then public right-of-way of 20 acres. Was that your reference?
That is exactly what my reference was. Yes.
The entire site is 88 acres.
I understand. But I'm, I'm asking you, are those single-family residences, the 267 of them on 58.3 acres? That comes to over four and a half per acre, does it not?
I don't know that it is.
Well, I can do basic division and it's 4.57 per acre.
The business zoning category, it's...
It, it might do that, but is it good for Papillion? I don't know.
This is virtually a twin for the Southern Oaks subdivision. It's been very well received in Papillion. Houses are sold, people are happy.
Okay, well, I, I'm not getting, you're not getting my support anyway for this because it doesn't, one, it's too dense. And two, there's no green space. And I want Papillion to be full of good communities where people can enjoy where they live and not have to run six blocks to get over to Walnut Creek Lake to the nearest park space. Is that's what's...
It's easier than others have it with regard to green space. We're, we're constructing this parkway, which is reconstructing Turkey Road.
Yeah, that parkway was already in the works, was it not?
No.
Okay, what?
We came in, we, we had a pre-op, we met with your staff, we talked to them. The original thought was to vacate Turkey Road. County would like to vacate Turkey Road. It's an angle street that doesn't square on the intersections and for lots of safety reasons, people don't like that. We were informed that you were going through a comprehensive plan review and that it might be this. In fact, we even came to the charrette. So we revised our plans to meet that. So this is, this is what the new Turkey...
So on the, on the eastern edge, you're going to take a road that already exists and spruce it up a little bit?
Well, significantly.
Okay.
And then also, you know, that comprehensive plan, that's a regional park. So this is the parkway that gets to your regional park. So we're trying to, very hard, to come to Papillion and ask Papillion's staff what they think. And this is what the result of that.
I know, and I don't know whether the current Celebrity Homes ownership is the same as what it used to be. But I know of at least one neighborhood here in Papillion that was a Celebrity Home neighborhood in the past that used very cheap materials. And the new residents had things such as siding peeling off the side of their house within the first five years. And I don't want to see that repeated here in our community either. Is, is it under the same ownership as it was?
Celebrity Homes is owned by the same people that have owned it since its inception.
So you know about the problems I recite?
I'm sorry.
You know about the problems I'm talking about then?
I didn't tell you this. I represent Celebrity Homes for a long time. They don't have one claim against somebody that builds approximately 700 houses a year.
Thank you.
Satisfaction rates are good. I'm sorry, sir.
Any other council questions? Okay. Any other proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1928, an ordinance to amend the 2020-2021 fiscal budget. This is also a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. E3, Ordinance 1931, an ordinance to reduce the aggregate insurance requirement for fireworks displays. Open the public hearing. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. F1, Resolution R210073, a resolution to approve an application for City of Papillion Doing Businesses Papillion Landing Event Center, 1046 West Lincoln Street, Papillion, Nebraska, to add an outdoor patio area to the premise of their Class A, Class I liquor license. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210073? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg, six yeas, one nay.
Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution R210076, a public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as part of the northwest quarter of Section 4 Township 13 North, Range 12 East of the 6 PM, Serpice County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southwest corner of Turkey Road and Shram Road, the applicant's Celebrity Homes, Shram 108. I'll open the public hearing. We'll take the comments from the previous one and carry them over as well. Any additional comments?
Mr. Fullencamp up here. I'd just like to, the density, 81 acres of this subdivision is houses. There are 267 houses. That's 3.3 units per acre. Your math, you take all the streets out. So you have to, if you're looking at densities, you have to take the acreage of the houses divided by the number of houses. There's 88 acres in the subdivision, seven acres of which are outlots. That leaves you 81 acres divided by 267 is 3.3.
That's not what was presented earlier of multifamily.
Can you turn your microphone on?
Multifamily residences, according to the materials that were provided to us.
The code identifies the R4 as R4 multifamily. These are 100% single-family. There's 267 on 81 acres. Is that the way that form gets filled out? I just looked at the form you're looking at. You see there's 8 acres of roadway.
I do see that. And I see a lot of houses just stacked up on top of each other with cookie cutter lots that are all the same size and stacked in on each other like sardines. That's what I see.
Well, I respectfully, you have 10-foot side yards in Papillion, so these lots are 70. 530. So the 10-foot will still be there. Sure.
Any other questions, Mr.? Any other questions, Mr. Sunday?
No.
Mr. Jaworski, did you have one?
No, I just wanted to make sure about the 10-foot.
Can you turn your mic on?
Sorry. I just was questioning the 10-foot, but if the 10-foot's still there, I'm fine with it.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing still, if you want to. Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R210076? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Klug. Any more council discussion? Can you go ahead and turn your mic on again?
It's on. Thanks. I would just say, Mr. Mayor, that I can't approve this plan as it's presented to us. I don't think it's best for the City of Papillion and its future. I think it's going to be creating a lot of problems for us in terms of the reputation of our city because I've seen some of the workmanship in the past from this same company. And we've been told that it's the same ownership. And some of that is in my ward. And I don't approve it and I'm not going to vote for it.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg, five yeas, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R210077, a resolution to accept a dedication of street right-of-way for Cornhusker Road between approximately South 106th Street and South 108th Street. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210077? Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg, six yeas, one nay.
Motion passes. Item F4, Resolution R210078, a resolution to approve general order policy PW050521.1-1. No parking determination and signage policy. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210078? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg, six yeas, one nay.
Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R210079, a resolution to approve general order policy PW050521.2-1. Speed limit modification policy. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210079? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Klug. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I just want to commend the Public Safety Committee and everybody for putting this together. I have been part of setting speed limits and parking restrictions for 20-some-odd years. And as I, when we got to more recently and I looked at that and realized we were just picking numbers and places out of the air and we needed a more rational, straightforward way of doing that. So this gives us that rational, straightforward, unambiguous way of making those decisions. And I'm very glad that it was brought forward and this is going to be our policy.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg, six yeas, one nay.
Motion passes. F6, Resolution R210080, a resolution to approve the installation of no parking signs at several locations. Those are North Adams Street, north of the intersection with West Fifth, near the top of the hill. West Centennial Road, near the intersection with North Polk, near the top of the hill. Cedar Woods Drive, along the curve, then it turns into Juniper Drive. South Madison Street, near the intersection with Grunter, along the curve and hill. Crest Road, near the intersection of South Adams, approaching the curve towards South Washington Street. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210080? Motion by Councilman Sunday. Second by Mr. Mumgarth. Anybody, any proponents? Anybody in favor? Any opponents? Anybody who wants to speak against? Yes. When you come up, if you'd state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
It's South Madison. I live on the corner of Madison and Grunter, which is one of the intersections in question. First, I'd like to thank the city for the improvements that were done to that intersection last year. It's awesome, along with the pavement, the new blacktop or whatever they put down. It's made it look like a brand-new neighborhood over there in Troubled Park. So thank you. I appreciate that. We all do in the neighborhood, so. First of all, in that intersection, I think where the stop signs currently, where the no parking signs are proposed, is a pretty broad area. And I think it's a little too broad in terms of what is truly needed there. I've never seen an accident at this intersection. I've lived there off and on for over 50 years. I think if we get too aggressive with the no parking, it's just going to push this problem somewhere else, down the corner, down the street, around on Crest or something else and make even more problems. So that's really what I, what I, what I'd like to make sure that we don't get too aggressive with this. We can always expand it, but I don't think we can contract it once we put up those signs and create a, create a flow.
And you're specifically referencing Madison and Grunter.
Right, right. On the north corner of Madison and Grunter, correct. Now, nobody parks on my side, which is the west side or the south side, because those are always no parking. But they proposed that this go all the way out to 301 Crest Road, which is really on Madison Street, but is addressed on Crest, which is an intersecting road. That I don't think needs to be no parking. I think, I think that should maintain parking. I think people that are on the crest of that hill in front of 1003 South Madison Street, which will lose some of their parking in this, need to have someplace to park and I think that will push it there. We certainly don't want to put, to push it up on Grunter, which runs east-west in front of that intersection because that creates problems for Ed Yocum bringing his truck around as well as other people. We're talking about line of sight here. That limits the line of sight for that particular intersection. So that's my concern.
I think as we open this up, as Jeff and I talked about, when we redesigned the street, when the city redesigned it, the straighter the street, the faster the traffic. So getting rid of some of this parking is only going to create more speeding problems in neighborhoods. So I think we, as part of this no parking, I think we should expand some of the patrols, maybe look at some of these. I think we also need to do signs and markings on that particular street around some of the stop bar for the crossing. It's been in our area since last year. It's only sprayed here and I think some more permanent markings need to be put there. And then some other signs that say it's a school zone. I never see any signs in a neighborhood that says it's a school zone. And we're a block away from Troubled Park. So I'd like to see some more signage too, if we could, just to let everybody know that's there, that drives that intersection. One of the most dangerous signs in that neighborhood is when the parents are there picking up their students, whether it's running stop signs, jockeying around other cars, texting while they're driving, speeding up and running the stop sign at the crest of that hill. I was backing into my driveway and somebody passes me while they're texting on their phone, just to stop at the intersection, to stop, this was two days ago, to stop the intersection, two cars below, it's like a, they're all jockeying, it's like a stop car race. It's like they're really jockeying for position. I think the parents need a little bit of scolding too down there. They can improve the problems in this neighborhood because that's part of the problem, is the danger to the school kids. The last question I had, or the last concern I have is when they plow snow on this, they come straight down Grunter Street and they pack it right through 1001 Madison. And that's the size of a car, or two cars, that sits there, depending on how fast it melts, sometimes for months, creating, again, another line of sight issue. They need to remove that. I mean, it's more... I mean, it's more foot-high and five to six feet wide sometimes, sitting right there where you could park a car, which we don't want. But that's just like a car sitting there, and people have to go around, and there are incoming trucks. So those are my concerns. So just to, I guess, wrap it up is three oh one Crest Road, I think should still be able to park on that, which is, which is access to Madison. Maybe two car lines down from, in front of one thousand and three South Madison, and parking on Grunter can maintain the way it is now, unless that becomes a problem, then they can go ahead and address that. I just want to make sure we don't put this problem somewhere else, and address all the problems at the same time. Change patrols, make sure that we sign correctly that there's parking for, truly for people. Right now, there's really not a lot of problems with parking in our neighborhood, but that can change. Somebody could sell a house, retire a couple, and you know you've got three teenagers and four cars in your driveway that have to park in the street for accidents.
And those other items, about the cross hawk not being seen, if there's other signage and that type of stuff. Public Works Director's in the audience, and I saw him making notes on that, so, and the snow, so we'll keep an eye on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Do we have any other opponents? And if you'd state your name and address for the record.
My team in one zero one Somerset Drive. You know, it's okay to put up no parking signs. The only big thing I have concern with is enforcing it. I don't want it to become cumbersome on our police department. I live in an area where you guys put up no parking signs, they're not enforced, so they're really doing no good. So that's just my only concern, is if we're going to put them up, we got to enforce the law equally across all the citizenry.
Which subdivision do you live in?
I live in Ward two over in Cotland.
Okay. Thanks. Any other proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Unless there's any amendments? Or discussion? Can you turn your mic on again?
About what Mr. Erdman said. Could, Jeff, could you come up here?
And then, Mr. Sunday, after you have the discussion, if you want to make any changes, that'd be appropriate to do the amendment at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, good evening. You heard what Mr. Erdman said about three oh one Crest?
It's three oh nine.
Three oh, three oh nine? Three oh? So I, I just wanted to hear your take on that.
Yeah, we had intended on signing it all the way down to the intersection at Crest. We're going to sign it just to the south, or excuse me, at the north of that driveway at three oh nine. So there'd still be a couple of parking stalls. There'd still be a couple of parking stalls in front of three oh nine on Madison.
Okay. Satisfactory.
Should we file?
Or if you can pull up Google Maps, and Jeff can kind of hone in on it there? Go ahead and pull up Google Maps, and Jeff can talk to that.
Yeah, it's actually on Side Street.
In the upper right.
Spin it around. Yeah.
It'll be nice to be back into the regular council chambers where we've got all the setup. Thanks for your patience. Jeff, that is a wireless mic, if it's easier to talk from over there.
We're looking at South Madison Street here, looking south towards Valley Road. If I spin around here. Our intent was to sign basically from this stop driveway, all the way up and around the corner, to just this side of the driveway on Madison. So three oh nine, which is right here, would still have all this on-street parking from their driveway to the intersection.
So that car that's sitting there in the picture, would that be in the no parking zone, or not in the no parking zone?
Not in the no parking zone.
Okay.
He's on the wrong side of the street. That's on the west side of the street.
Yeah. That's three oh nine right there. So the no parking would basically extend from here, going south, all the way down around the corner, down the hill.
Which side of the driveway is the zone? Does the zone change? Can you go back to that Crest Road? I just want to make sure council knows what they're voting on. Okay, where's, where's the beginning of the no parking zone? Would, that car would be legal?
That car would be legal, yes.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Sunday?
Yes, I, I agree with that, too. Everything south of that driveway, I think it should be no parking, but I do not. I think that part there is fine.
I agree, that's, that's our intent.
Jeff, how far south does the no parking start then?
So just for the record, the question was how far south?
We're planning on starting on this side of this driveway, right here.
Right there, at thousand seven.
Thousand five, correct.
Where are all those people that are parked up? I'm concerned, Jeff, is that?
Can you come up?
Parking here, they're going to go up to Grunter, or are they going further down the street, you create problems there, so. Should we consider something else at Grunter then? Maybe a seventy-foot or fifty-foot setback from that stop sign there that goes east-west? To keep people from parking there or approaching on that area? If that's a line of sight issue for that intersection.
So, Mr. Sunday, you, you heard the question. Is there, do you have any follow-up?
Initially, I was on the safety committee that discussed this particular location initially, as was Mr. Mumgarth, but it was felt by the committee that someone coming up this hill, and there's many cars every day picking their kids up from school, that do come up this hill, and they have to crest that hill, and when there's cars parked beyond that driveway, which I think you said was one thousand and five? And, and all the way to where you said earlier, just in front of the property on Crest there, I think it's legitimate that we have no parking, because I do think it, even though we've never had any accidents, that's probably not a good enough reason to not be vigilant and try to avoid accidents. We never had a little girl killed downtown until last year, but it happened. So if we see a danger, we should address it, if it's not too onerous on the citizens, and I don't think this is. I, I think this is reasonable, because we've got lots of school traffic every day, and we need to protect the motoring public and the kids in the area, so.
Any other council discussion? Any amendments being offered? If not, please vote.
Sunday? Mumgarth? Jaworski? Klug? Stube? Ingberg? Six yeas, zero nays?
Motion passes. Next is item F seven, Resolution R twenty-one zero zero eight two. A resolution to approve an inner-local agreement between Sarpy County and the cities of Papillion, La Vista, Bellevue, and Gretna for use of the Sarpy County Jail. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero zero eight two? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Klug. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday? Mumgarth? Jaworski? Klug? Stube? Ingberg? Six yeas, zero nays?
Motion passes. All the regular agenda items. Next is committee reports, and I think we had two of them meet. Finance and administration.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a couple items on our agenda for tonight. The first one was a review of our EMS billing rates, what we charge for transport of patients. And we primarily transport emergencies. We do not transport hospital-to-hospital non-emergencies. We decided to increase it slightly. We reviewed all the comparisons with communities in Nebraska, and we fall about in the middle. And we found it to be very reasonable that we at least keep abreast of what cost we incur, because we have paramedics on our squads, and, and that's what we primarily do. We have some response for calls that involves EMTs, and paramedics don't necessarily provide that particular service, but many times we do have paramedic service required. So we felt it was reasonable, and council will be getting before you the new charges for the EMS transportation rates. The second item was a discussion of a compliance engine. What it basically is, and the condensed version is, is a program administered by another party, not the city, that will assist us in monitoring fire systems, whether it be fire sprinklers or other fire suppression parts of buildings, businesses, and so forth. And it'll enable us to have a, a record of, of those businesses or establishments or buildings, and their inspection of the fire systems, fire suppression systems, and so forth. There is no cost to the city. The, the company that will do this has a presence of the state, and they will take care of all the administration of it. And what the city gets in return is they have a running record of, of whether buildings are in compliance with their fire safety equipment, and that it's up to date and it's been inspected. We'll also get notice if it's not completed in a timely fashion. I think that's important, because if, if those of you on the council will recall, as part of our city ordinance, we, we are required to maintain some records in and be aware of such activity, whether this fire suppression equipment is inspected on a, on a regular basis, an annual basis. As I said, there's no cost to the city. We will propose, the committee will propose a slight fee, primarily because it will generate some extra work for the staff as far as additional paperwork and so forth. And we felt it was appropriate, for the first year, to charge a fee that's very nominal, and it's at least half of those other communities that already have this in place. And after a year, we'll review it and see how things work, and we'll see if it generates more work for the staff than we think, or not, and we'll adjust the fee accordingly. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And the Audit Ad Hoc Committee, I can't remember who's chair of that, Mr. Sunday?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet tonight. We were asked, as a committee, tonight to recommend to the full council a request for proposal, or an RFP, to out, to an outside financing, financial accounting, or auditing firm to handle Papillion's work for the next four years. In other words, handle Papillion's annual financial audit for the next four years, and also a comprehensive annual report. We talked about some of the things that Nancy Hypes is looking for in the successful bidder. We decided not to make that a part of our recommendation. She's able to handle those things, and I think we talked about her, her desire for hard copies this year, as well as electronic copies. She feels she can work better with those, and we did vote, as a committee, to approve of that unanimously.
Thank you very much. So the committee reports. Any comments from the floor? Seeing none. Any council comments? Mr. Sunday?
Could I call up Acting Chief Widdit? Acting Chief, I'm not trying to pick on you, trust me, but I've been hearing a lot tonight, as well as other citizens, talking about police enforcement of our speeding and traffic laws in Papillion, and it always seems to be concentrated on the major arteries, but not in the neighborhoods.
I want to be a little careful, and I'll look to Mr. Thielen just for advice. I'm real sensitive to the Open Meetings Act, and since it was not an agenda item, I don't know if we can get into a discussion. It's appropriate to make a comment, but I don't know if we can get into a discussion.
I'll just make the blanket comment that although I'm not criticizing our police force, because I think the world of them, I would like to see more patrolling of our speeding laws, traffic laws, in the neighborhoods where our kids are out playing, not just on the major arteries where people are maybe easier to catch. That's all I would have to say.
Got that noted. Thank you. Unless it's appropriate that he responds, Mr. Thielen?
No, I don't think, I, as long as it's factual, I, I don't think there's any problem with it, but you don't need to respond.
Well, I would tell you that the number one complaint we get, or I get, is the speeding complaints in all, all areas of the city. Collector's Streets, residential streets. Many times when there are deviations with detours and things like that, and the volume of traffic picks up, people perceive that as speeding. Now, there are individual speeding events on pretty much every street in the city, I would tell you that. Some of the problems in catching speeding on those residential streets is just the fact that they happen so infrequently. So you might have an officer sitting there for two hours before he catches that one speeder. And, and by, again, they're usually running from a call. You know, they might have thirty, forty-five minutes of unallocated time to work some speeding. But they do work very hard to speed. Now, when we have other complaints in their areas, we have what's called a selective enforcement list, so we will put those out to the troops, to the patrol staff, say, hey, we really like to hit this area or this area. Moreover, we have a Sarpy County Task Force, and we've done a couple of enforcements in just the last month in the Papillion area. I think there's been one hundred and twenty-three stops on one of those, and another one had eighty-some stops. And additionally, we've had some clicker ticket enforcement, as well as you drink, you drive, you lose. Now, obviously, the DWI one probably focuses more on the arterial, you know, bigger streets, but the other ones can focus anywhere. We do, do stop sign enforcement in places, and we have caught speeders, but it comes down to, a lot of times, it's difficult to, to catch them, where you're going to sit, and again, how often has it occurred. And we do do the speed studies that also give sometimes timeframes when there might be a potential problem. So, but we, we can certainly look at that.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Just a few updates from the last couple of weeks. Again, we have the weekly United Cities Call. Most of that's focused legislatively, so again, if there's a piece of legislation that you specifically are interested in and want us to follow, let us know. We're in the part of the session where it's pretty fast-moving, amendments being made that totally change the character of bills, and so we're watching that real closely, but if there's anything you want us to watch, let us know. We also had an MFO meeting. For those not familiar with it, the MFO is the Mutual Fire Organization, so Papillion, La Vista, and the Rural Fire District. But the City of Papillion Fire Department serves all three of those jurisdictions, and so there is a board that's made up of all three of those jurisdictions, generally with the mayor, city administrator, or the rural fire president. And we meet on a quarterly basis. Primary is chief gives a report of activity for the last quarter. Nancy gives a financial update of the last quarter. And then this quarter was what we call the true-up. The city funds most of it through its budget, and then we bill the other jurisdictions, and then, and then this is the quarter we tell them if we were right or wrong on what they owe us, and collect our money, and, and true-up on that. Another discussion that has started, that you'll start hearing probably a little bit about, is also site selection. We know with the growth that's occurring, and our future land use comprehensive plan, we've got to be thinking down the road.
we've got to be thinking down the road, when, not if, when another station is needed, and where that station is. And so, chief is starting to do a lot of work to identify growth patterns, and response times, and starting to hone in, because we know sooner than later, even if we're not ready to build that station, we've got to protect the site. So, we'll probably be looking at a, a site acquisition discussion, probably sooner than later. And so, that would, we started that discussion, so chief's doing some work to, to identify sites on selection. Had a couple of ribbon cuttings. The Storage Cave, which was a reuse of the old Wildcat Lanes, is an indoor storage facility now. And then Abbey's Corner, which is a small business downtown, it's a boutique on the west side of Washington, just south of Second, and that's a not-for-profit. So, and, so that's a nice business to have down there. Then the CHI, Midlands Hospital, had their announcement with the VA. If you, if people are not familiar with that, the VA is taking the fifth and sixth floors of Midlands Hospital. It's going to be called Community, I forget what their acronym is, but the intent of it is veterans who need more care than a hospital, so like assisted living or skilled nursing, but they're not going to be in a place permanently, so they might have a need for three, four, five, six months. This is that facility. So, there will be veterans that could be staying there four, five, six months for care. An example might be somebody who's in the hospital on a vent and needs to be weaned off of that. They could be there, or a hip replacement, and they need physical therapy, and so there'd be people traveling in, because the closest one right now is Grand Island. A veteran that needs that type of help that's in the metro area has to go to Grand Island. So, this will serve Western Nebraskan, I mean, Eastern Nebraska, Western Iowa. It's a big deal. Kevin Miller, the president of Midlands Hospital, really was the impetus behind it. I think some of the discussion goes back as far, though, as when Congress was talking about a new VA facility. This is an outcome of some of that discussion. And what's unique about it is it's the first in the nation where the VA is using a leased facility inside of a private hospital. And again, a lot of that is the innovation of Kevin Miller, who's the president of Midlands Hospital, so it's a great thing for Papillion to have. One of the other things they're going to do with it, out on the grounds of Midlands Hospital, outside, they're going to bu, build what they call a peace garden, basically a thing for healing, but it's a, the VA is not funding that, and Midlands is not either, so they're starting a capital campaign to raise money for that healing garden, so you might hear about that. Or if you know of anybody that might be interested in that, let us know, and we can get them plugged in. It was Arbor Day, we had two Arbor Day events. One, the first one in the morning, Facebook gave a hundred thousand dollar donation to Arbor Day Foundation for trees in Sarpy County, and Papillion received about seventy-six trees. That's a, that's a very significant donation, and those went in Walnut Creek, around the campsite, to kind of insulate it from that growing area where some of the houses are. So, that'll, that'll be a very mature area. That's the same group, partnership, that gave us a donation of about seventy-plus trees that went into the dog park last year. We're usually happy when we get ten trees, and we've gotten like a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty, so that's a very significant donation. And then a special one is at City Hall. The City of La Vista donated a tree in honor of our hundred and fiftieth anniversary, so that's planted in front of City Hall. I think that's the major updates. Any other council comments, or any other updates? We do have a closed session tonight, so I'll take a motion, is there, well, just for the public, if, so the, if anybody's watching, closed session, we, the city council is a quorum, can only go behind closed doors for discussion for, I think it's three different items. If we're taking some type of personnel action, and we wanted to protect the integrity of that individual, we can go and have discussion there. If we're doing anything related to real estate negotiations, we can go talk about negotiation strategy, because you don't want to tell people your strategy out in the public. And then the third one is if there is any discussions in lawsuits, and you want to figure out negotiation strategy as well. No votes are taken behind closed session. If there are any votes taken, they're all out in public session. And so, we do have a closed session tonight. Is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss pending litigation? Motion by Councilman Klug, second? Councilman Sunday, any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mumgarth?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
680 Nace?
Motion passes. I'll state for the record, the purpose of the closed session is only to discuss pending litigation. Closed session will include the mayor, the city council, city administrator, deputy city administrator, city attorney, interim chief of police, and the city clerk. And again, for the public, in the closed session, that is the only topic we can talk about, and if we talk about anything else, I think it's a misdemeanor. So, we'll be meeting in the second-floor conference room.